I pledge, sir, all payroll. Meeting is called to begin. We will be to pledge our allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in heart.
Thank you, Kevin. We'll need a roll call to determine if we've got a warrant.
Ron Fruit.
Here.
Karen Tuckley.
Here.
Tom McCarthy.
Here.
Mark Chambers.
Here.
Kevin Melby.
Here.
Melanie Walters.
Here.
Steve Downs.
Here.
Brian Cairns.
Here.
Carville Corr.
Thank you. Was this meeting properly noticed?
Yes.
Thanks again. Next on the agenda, approval of the minutes. Once the council's had a moment to review the minutes, we'll entertain a motion to approve. I'll make that motion. Motion for Mr. Chambers, is there a second?
I've got some corrections.
On the minutes?
On the minutes, yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
The second page, under the section of the line of mayor and older persons, the second paragraph reads, "An older person definitely also reported on the Historic Preservation Commission, which will now be meeting court." The meeting is misspelled, it needs an extra E. M-E-T-I-N-G, not M-E-E-T-I-N-G. And then also, a couple other paragraphs down, there's a paragraph that reads, "An older person, Kevin Melby, announced that the pedestrian crossing is high and crude by the Public Safety and Public Works Commission Committees at 8th and Main Street has been installed and is operational, though it currently does not interact with the sign at 6th and Main." You don't want it to interact with the sign at 6th and Main, so I'd like to strike the words "though" and "current." So it reads, "It's installed and is operational, it does not interact with the sign at 6th and Main."
Okay, did you get the corrections?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we go on. Motion to approve the amended minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the amended minutes.
Andy, we get the second?
Second.
Mr. Downs with the second. Any further discussion of the minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes with those two corrections? May we signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Minutes are approved. Next is approval of the agenda. I assume on the Finance Committee, item five needs to be removed?
Yes, please remove item five.
That one needs to go. Anything else? Okay. Entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda with item five from the Finance Committee being removed from the agenda.
Tumble.
Motion for Mr. Downs, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Melby, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the amended agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I am motion is carried. Okay, next on the agenda, City and Utility Department had reports and concerns. I'll start with Scott Goll.
Uh, did you, I guess it's just a short reminder, October 9th, next Wednesday night, is the annual Utility Customer Appreciation Night at the Community Center from 3:30 to 6:30. We'll provide supper. We've got tables for education within the utility and the city departments have been invited, like they have been to set up tables, tourism, parks, library, that it partake. Update on 8th Street. In our meeting yesterday, the first coat of blacktop is down. It sounds like they're going to finish Thursday and Friday. And from the utility side, the sewer right now is unacceptable until we get the second coat on, or the final coat, and then the mister manhole to cut the holes in the top so we can get into the manholes. All utilities, we're working on budgets and doing a lot of process improvements and looking at how we do things and reviewing the IT part of the utility along with Ashley on the city side on the different servers. We each have a server on each side and all that works together. So WPPI was actually out here last week. They offer an à la carte to that as we're member owners of that and we're looking at that. So, other than that, it's been a very busy and interesting time, but things are going really well.
Thanks, Scott. Mr. Glensberger.
Yeah, so I think a couple of things that I want the council to be aware of. One thing is that is coming out of Public Works Committee is that in the downtown area, there were two drinking fountains that are still in existence. One is inoperational at the corner by the BMO Bank. The other one is right there by Kelly's Coffee. It was discussed at Public Works that though the use of those drinking fountains, our culture has changed. Those probably aren't the best. Probably aren't being used like they used to be, especially with there being so much access to water and other drinks and things like that in the area. So it was discussed and decided that those would be removed mid-October when we normally shut down all of the fountains and things like that in the parks and Public Works, that they would not be replaced in the spring. So if that's a concern to anyone, how we take it up with the Public Works, you know, we could address it at a later meeting, but at this point, we wanted to make sure the council was aware because there may be a few people that are like, "What happened to those?" One of them is inoperational and has a damage line underground at the BMO Bank. Would have to, a lot of work would have to be done anyway to get it back up and operational. So, in Public Works, we are in that phase where we're leaf cleanup, branch pickup, things like that, preparing for winter. Scott, our reported on the highway, or 8th Street, Park Street, street project going well. I think we're looking forward to having a punch-out meeting on that, probably within two weeks here, which means that we'll get together and review any items that we think may have not been performed to satisfactory and that will be required to go back through and make correction on those. Doing quite a bit of work, research at the airport. The city actually has available to them right now close to a million dollars in grant funds for capital improvement at the airport. That's how we built the terminal building out at the airport and that fund gets replenished or there's an apportionment that comes to the city for airport capital improvement every year. Right now, that fund's built back up to around a million dollars. So there will be a future public hearing and things that we need to move through. The Bureau of Varinautics, a resolution that the council has to pass so that we can access those funds. That's a lot of work there. We are doing, taking some steps on the grant, the congressional funding that we received for the site, future site of the hospital. We're working on trying to figure out the appropriate use of those funds considering the hospital's kind of delayed construction process. Also doing some grant work with WEDC. Los Amigos is an active project down there. And we still have an active project from when I was a shared physician with the county up out at Rockbridge Childcare. So those are a few things that we're focused on right now in Public Works and at the downtown.
Thanks, Stacy.
At the library, our historian is semi-retiring, so we didn't use this week to fill a temporary position for coverage while she was away. We have furnace that is due for replacement in the lower level of the building. That's on your agenda this evening. And we're also working with DPW to complete some landscaping, build projects in the front of the building as well as correct the, some rot issues with our columns on the front of the building. Our friends at the Library Foundation will be hosting our 55th year anniversary open house on Saturday, November 2nd, from 10 to 2. We'll have chili lunch, live music. Our book sale will be open. And it will also be the kickoff for the next community read. Reading "Gorgia Rose, The Poisoning Richland County" by local author Katie Haltblad. Your community can pick up free copies of the book at the library starting that day. Also, on October 16th, a Wednesday, that's a no-school day for Richland School District, we will have River Valley Raptors at the Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Zone Passer. Sorry.
The RFP for the shared ride taxi was published on vendor net today, so that is open from October 1st until October 31st. Anyone that's interested in submitting a request for proposal for the shared ride taxi service can do that. Open enrollment officially began yesterday and goes through October 25th, so we'll be working with employees to get signed up for insurance benefits. I would encourage everybody to view the city's calendar. There are many, many events going on this weekend especially. I don't think we've ever seen our calendar quite look this way. So I would just encourage everybody to take a peek at the many things going on this weekend. And then also, next weekend, on the 12th, we have large item collection. So you might notice people preparing for that already and putting things out. Technically, we do not want to see items out before 6:00 a.m. on the 12th. And then departments are working on their budgets and we'll be scheduling budget hearings with the Finance Committee in the month of October. And that is all I have for this evening.
Let's make an introduction. The new zoning administrator, Mr. Matt Williams. Say hello, sir.
Hello. Nice to be here, nice to see you guys. So yeah, it's the beginning of the fourth week that I've been the zoning administrator. It's definitely a learning curve. There's a lot of things to learn legally and just figuring out our ordinance. I do have, obviously I'll be here Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., so that will help with anybody that needs access to the office instead of the one day a week, which was Wednesday when Mark was here. I'm still working with Mark for now. On Wednesdays, he still comes down and he's available for me to contact him whenever, so that's pretty helpful. One of the other things that I've been kind of doing and keep an eye on is I get emails from Digger's Hotline. I have actually got a couple of permits out of that just from the people not knowing that they needed permits. Once you reached out to them and kind of explained to them our process, they were more happy to get our permits filled out. So that's good. I think more knowledge people have on our zone department, I think will help that to get more, hopefully, permits filled out the correct way. That's all I have.
Thank you. Welcome over. Thank you. Amanda, did you have anything you want to share tonight?
I would love to. So we encourage all of our elder persons to be part of the election coming up. We have a big election November 5th. We have our first poll training tomorrow afternoon and we're busy getting that ready. So any of you or public that is interested in volunteering at the polls, we'd love to have you. You can contact us at the clerk's office. We've also been working on cleaning up the office, clearing out some old files that are no longer necessary, cleaning out the library. It's been a process that we're really excited about.
Thank you. Okay, next, I don't see any other department that's here tonight, so next on the agenda is the treasurer's report.
You have the treasurer's report in the packet that you can take a look at there. This month, we don't have the utility treasurer's report since it is the first of the month. It's very difficult to have a treasurer's report done. So they're almost finished with theirs. They'll have it prepared for their Utility Commission meeting, their upcoming meeting. And ours is looking at through the end of August 30. So August 31st is the one that you have in your packet.
And the council review, let me know if there are any questions or comments regarding the treasurer's report. If there are none, entertain a motion to approve tonight's treasurer's report.
I will make that motion.
Motion for Mr. Melby, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Downs, is there discussion of the treasurer's report? Hearing none, all in favor, roll calls approved.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tuckley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda, payment of the bills. The bills presented on this day excluding any library funding voices having been referred to the Finance and Budget Committee and said committee, having duly investigated and audited these bills hereby make the following recommendation, that the city bills presented on this day be paid with the following adjustments and/or exceptions, and no adjustments or exceptions are listed. It is signed by all three members of the Finance Committee. Once the council has reviewed the bills, entertain a motion to pay them.
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion for Mr. Cairns, is there a second? Second for Mr. Downs, discussion of the bills. Okay, we'll need a roll call to pay those.
Cairns.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Tuckley.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Right, next, discussion and action items. I have four, ordinance amending Chapter 399 of the Richland Center Code of Ordinances. What this deals with, license code is for, in this case, for liquor licenses, is how it came up. Ashley, do you want to introduce this one?
Yeah, that's fine. So currently, we are required by state law to enforce a quota for the Class B liquor licenses, so that's bars, liquor for the bar, for a bar. Otherwise, no other beer or liquor license has a quota. We could issue as many or as few as we would like. So we're, in this ordinance before you, asking you to consider amending the ordinance to allow the council to approve issuing as many licenses as we're legally allowed to. It doesn't mean that you would have to, but it gives you the freedom to choose to do so rather than what we have now. But again, like I said, we still have the one quota that we would have to enforce no matter what, which is 11. So we can only issue up to 11 Class B liquor licenses per year. And right now, the way the ordinance reads, we tie Class B liquor with Class B beer. So for six of the Class B liquor licenses, they have to be issued in conjunction with a Class B beer. So by approving this, you would eliminate that combination license that we currently have right now, which practically speaking, makes some sense. Usually, people want to have both when they're trying to obtain a license like this, but just in the last year or so, we've had instances where a business owner only wanted one, but we only had the combination available. So they had to get both when really they didn't want both and it didn't make a lot of sense for them. So this ordinance, proposed ordinance amendment, would just give greater freedom, greater liberty in issuing licenses while adhering to what the state law requires.
Okay. So at some point in the city's past, they put a limit on this that is not required by the state.
Correct.
And what this does is remove that self-imposed limit and still makes us state compliant, but puts in the hands of the council a lot more leeway if there are more people that request these licenses.
Correct. And then this also, in addition to that, would allow the council to designate a committee to issue licenses if they so chose to do that. There's not a resolution. It would require a resolution, so it's not part of the request here, but this ordinance does have language in there that if, say, the Public Safety Committee or another committee like that, if the council wanted, they could designate that committee to be the committee to approve licenses.
Can I read this so the public hears it? What's in front of me? Ordinance 2024-04. And ordinance amending Chapter 399 of the Richland Center Code of Ordinances. The common council of the city of Richland Center does hereby ordain that Section 399.15 is amended to read as follows. The 399.15 license code is: One, number of licensed licenses to be granted, the number of persons and places that may be granted liquor licenses by the city of Richland Center is limited as provided in the Wisconsin statutes. Two, authority to grant licenses. The common council shall have the exclusive authority to grant licenses under this chapter, except that the council by resolution may designate a committee or other subunit to exercise this authority on the council's behalf. Be it further ordained that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage and publication. And if passed, it would read then, enacted by the common council of the city of Richland Center on this first day of October 2024. Discussion by the council.
I had a quick question, Ashley, and the last point that you were just making, that if the council were to, as you gave the example of having Public Safety take care of this, would that then mean that any Public Safety, any Public Safety action on these granting of licensers would not have to come to common council?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So you had mentioned, like, a business wanted just a beer license, but they had no choice. They had to get a common license. If we pass this, can these businesses then come back and say, "I want you to..." Can they request, like, a reissue of the license they actually want?
They could rescind their license, so they could return it to us.
And then get the one that they actually wanted?
Correct.
Okay.
Further comments or questions?
One more question. Since I've been on the Public Safety Committee, one of our, one of our big functions is to grant temporary beer and wine licenses. How is that, how is that affected by the limit of the state? I'll remember. Does it apply to temporary licenses or is it just for permanent licenses?
It's the permanent licenses that are effective. Aside from, like, wine walks, there is a state limit on wine. How many wine walks can occur in a year?
Okay, thank you.
Ashley, has this been an issue? Have you received, like, many of these issues coming forward? Like, hey, I just need this kind of license, but I have to get both? How often does that occur?
I wouldn't say it's a huge issue. It's just an issue when it becomes an issue because we don't want to be in a situation where, in a community that we're trying to grow and have economic development, we don't want to put ourselves in a position where we have, I don't know, Red Lobster come in and they need both licenses in order to come and say we don't have any available.
Because we have to issue them before. Got it.
Right. So we just want to guard against.
Right, got it. Thank you, that's what I was expecting.
Further discussion? Can we entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion for Mr. Chambers, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Downs. Further discussion on the side? Okay, in this case, I'll have a roll call to approve.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tuckley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next on the agenda, Finance Committee recommendations and action, Mr. Brian Cairns.
Thank you. Item 6, overhead crane repair at Streets Garage. If you're looking at your packet, there's an agenda item sheet that explains the crane that the Streets Garage had quit working. They had called out the crane manufacturer to diagnose it and there is a repair quote in there. We just discussed this in finance and my motion would be to approve the overhead crane repair at the Streets Building by Town Cranes at a cost of $7,842.12 coming from unallocated contingency.
Motion for Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Melby, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Cairns.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Tuckley.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda, appointments to communities, commissions, boards, and confirm appointments. I'm going to do this in two steps. The first one, I have an appointment to the ADA Committee, Mr. Casey Garner, who I see as well as again, thanks for coming. Again, Casey. At this point, I'll just entertain a motion to approve appointment of Casey Garner to the ADA Committee.
I'll make that motion.
Motion for Mr. Melby, second for Mr. Downs, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next, I want to make a comment. We've got a few committee openings right now. One on the Plan Commission, one on the Tourism Commission, one on the Library Board, and still one more on the ADA Committee. So if there are people that have interest in serving, please contact me or you can come down to the clerk's office. They'll get it to me. Okay, also, it is time for the council to elect a member of the Utility Commission. Lenny Schaub's term is up and I spoke to Lenny and he asked me to actually put someone else in. He told me he's got enough going on. Is that why you're here, Jim?
No.
Okay. I just, okay. So it's just every year this time, someone is appointed to a five-year term. Lenny's term is up. I want to thank him for his service. He served, I don't know how many years, a long time. Probably at the end.
I'm going to say two terms anyways, probably.
Yep, and he did the Tourism Commission for a lot longer than that. And he was done in the spring on that. He's just moving on to other things. Mr. Schaub, thank you for your service. I know he's not here, but he does watch these. So at this point, we need to elect a new member to a five-year term on the Utility Commission and it's open to residents of the city. Lenny's out. I don't know if anyone else has anyone I don't know if anyone else has anyone that has stepped forward and said that they were interested. I made some calls, the people I talked to had other things in their life and said they really didn't want to. So among other things, I'm going to make myself available for appointment. I am a resident of the city, and I'd love to be on it. If there's anyone else, speak up, and we'll do the election.
Mayor, can you be a?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just as a citizen appointee, it's got nothing to do with this office.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion to approve or to appoint Todd Kaepernick to the utility commission.
Motion for Mr. Downs, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Walters, is there discussion? Okay, we're going to need a roll call on this.
All right. Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Okay, that's covered. Next, public comment. Mr. Tony Burke, if we could, Mr. Burke's new at one of our meetings. Let's get him the microphone, and we're going to do an introduction here. Just a second, Tony. Did we tell you you have a singing group tonight, Tony?
Should I run my daughter through?
Give me just one second to set the stage here. So I just met Tony about less than an hour ago. When he walked in, I introduced myself, and what he's here for, and we're going to use public comment to introduce this, I've made sure he knows that no action will be taken here tonight on this item. But Mr. Burke, what he wrote here, new ownership of Town Taxi, and what he wants to talk about is public transportation grant. The reason I read that is just to set the stage for you, sir. So you must be taking this over from the Carley family?
Correct.
Is that, oh, good. Please use the microphone, go ahead and say what you need to say.
All right. So, yeah, I came here tonight, I decided about twenty-four hours ago to come and introduce myself. I'm early, I know that, but I know that the transportation grant and the service in the community is something that needs to be addressed, so I prepared something. My name's Tony Burke, and I'm here to introduce myself and my wife as the proud owners of Town Taxi and discuss the future of Richland Center's public transportation system. Although the previous owners are going through the grieving process of a funeral, they have decided to pass the torch after forty-six years, and because I'm a public transportation driver now and I share my stories on social media, they reached out to me to see if I would be interested in continuing their business. And little did they know that I have been researching and planning to do something of the sort already on my own, so the situation seemed like a perfect fit. I'm going to share with you a couple things. This lady right here, her name is Ruth. Ruth's eighty-six, she's in a wheelchair. Ruth lives in an apartment by herself in a non caregiving facility. She uses a taxi service to go to dialysis appointments twice a week, and those two times a week are about the only times that she gets out. We feel like Ruth deserves a taxi service that focuses on the customer and is willing to go the extra mile, so to speak, that wants to make sure those two dialysis trips a week are convenient, comfortable, and maybe she might even have a laugh or two. If she needs help getting into her building or getting into her apartment, we feel she deserves a service that's willing to do so. This guy right here, somebody you might recognize, I'm not sure. His name's Louis. This is Louis. I'm just staying in the picture. Louis's daughter was in town to take him out for lunch. He also doesn't, didn't get out very much at the time, and she was in town to take him out for lunch. And after lunch, they wanted to take Louis by the cemetery so he could go past his wife's grave, because he hadn't been there in a few years. And Louis deserves a reliable service that's willing to go out of its way to make things like this happen for someone that normally only gets out for doctor's appointments. And one last, this here, one of my favorites, this guy, that's Keith. Keith is, Keith lives in an assisted living group home out in Nelson Park. He takes a taxi every day to work at Walmart and Vark. He's a River Valley graduate, so he's given me a lot of flack this week. And Keith loves music and sports, and Keith considers his driver taking him to work a big part of his day, a chance for him to talk to someone like a friend. Keith and numerous people in similar situations deserve a friendly and timely service, right down to a local dispatch office with proper technology to make the process trouble-free. These stories I just shared with you, they are real people with real situations in our community. And listen, I fully intend to address each of these issues and more that I haven't discussed already. And after, we want to offer a local, family-owned and operated transportation service that focuses on the well-being of the customer and is an active, productive part of the community. We're both raised in Richland Center, and for the last seventeen years, we've raised four children here. As a family, we struggle with a small physical disability of our own. So we personally know and understand how it can feel for someone to do that one extra thing to make life, simple tasks, just a little bit easier, and that's the kind of business we plan to run. I personally have been driving public transportation in Richland Center for the past ten months, and I know, firsthand, the importance of a service like this and what it means to some people's lives. And I understand the weak spots of our current service that need attention. I build relationships with current customers and their caregivers and with the assisted living homes, Vark, and the medical facilities that also provide a service to these people. And I fully intend to make Town Taxi a local and reliable service for not just the customer but for the Richland Center community as a whole. My wife, Melissa, she has fifteen years' experience. Oops, I dropped it, so I guess we're kind of lax in this room. She has fifteen years' experience in retail and office management, and her last job, her latest job at Richland Hospital, has given her a chance to meet some of the clients that I drive around and become familiar with their specific needs, always making her the perfect person to run our office and dispatch end of our business. I already have local drivers lined up that have also seen the issues that need to be addressed. They have their own connections with Richland Center and the people we drive and who share our vision of putting customer and community first over making an extra dollar. And we are, like, literally clicks away from having technology set up that makes our booking process local, quick, and easy for both the customer and the driver, combining the original Town Taxi phone number that their customers have memorized for years, along with a free customer app that eliminates the current large wait times just to book a ride. And we will be able to offer easy booking stations at other local establishments and businesses, healthcare facilities, allowing us to work hand-in-hand with other local businesses to cross-promote, run specials. And the technology we have set up also offers a GPS mapping system on the localized app, giving our customers and our drivers and even you the ability to see the locations of our vehicles on the road, making Town Taxi a streamlined, trouble-free, productive part of our community. Vehicles are another area I'd like to touch on quick. Under the current system, you see the white wheelchair vans on the road, and you think to yourself, well, that's great that we offer that kind of service, but what you don't understand is that a wheelchair van is honestly only convenient for a wheelchair. Every time I have a customer that uses a walker or doesn't get around so well, we need to get our stepstool to help him get up in the van, get in the seat, and these things seem like an obvious liability as soon as someone slips or misses a step. Ideally, we need more like a mid-sized crossover SUV, Equinox-type size vehicle with proper seat height, plenty of storage for their cargo room, for their walkers, and their groceries and such. Our plan for Town Taxi's expansion includes a total of four available vehicles on the road, two wheelchair accessible and two non, like the ones I just mentioned. All of our vehicles would be equipped with the booking and dispatch technology I spoke of earlier. And for the liability and safety of our customers and our drivers and the community, we have lined up dash mount cameras that not only monitor what's on the road in front of us, but also what's going on in the cab of the taxi and a camera at the rear of the vehicle. And they automatically stop and save in the event of an accident, and I can see those potentially being another benefit to the community, possibly the police department. With vehicles on the road eighteen hours a day, you never know what an extra set eyes might be helpful. The original Town Taxi was established in Richland Center in nineteen seventy-eight. Somewhere in the mid-eighties, when I was in grade school, Bond and Marion, the founders, would drive me to school in the morning because due to my skin condition, I couldn't walk to class every day. I couldn't walk to Ten Box Jefferson Elementary School, like most kids. And the business has been serving Richland Center and its rural residents for forty-six years, but I'm really not here to give you a history lesson. Although we're honored to continue the name and tradition, I'm here to stress that we are a new ownership with a new vision. The aging and disabled population in our community is growing every year. The number of people choosing alternative transportation is growing every year, whether it be for financial reasons or someone trying to help the environment by having one less vehicle on the road. And our local families are busier than ever with both parents working, kids having numerous extracurricular activities and events. We also want those people who would not normally turn to a taxi service to feel comfortable asking for our assistance by offering clean, respectable vehicles, drivers that are well-dressed and friendly, and a reliable, locally owned and operated ride service. Public transportation is not going away, and whatever the reason may be, whether it's every day or once a year, we feel like the customers deserve a local service that understands the growing needs of the community and our surrounding residents. And as the new owners of Town Taxi, that is our focus, customer and community. Now, I'm sure you're thinking that this all sounds great, but does he have numbers to support it? Although our business plan has changed a lot over the last...
Hold on.
Yeah?
Okay, so what do you want to do, if I understand this right, is get involved and talk to us about a grant for this?
Well, yes.
Hold on. That's not right. This is to introduce this, what you did. What I'm going to give you is some instruction. What do we need him to do to come back? Because this is going to have to go through committee and all of that, so what's the right step for him to take?
I...
Yeah. Hannah?
We can connect and set up a meeting.
Because then, where you're going is where we're going to go. Tonight, we just needed to meet you. We're good. Don't take it the wrong way, just the public comment is benefit. Usually about two or three minutes longer. You're okay.
Sure.
Just what I want you to do is follow up with the administrator. She'll instruct you on how to proceed, and then we'll get you in here the way this needs to be done for where you're going. Thank you for caring enough about the community to do what you're doing.
All right.
Okay, and stick around, I want to talk to you some more.
Sure.
Okay, cool. And anybody else that wants to as well?
Sure.
We're going to be wrapped up in like another minute and a half. Okay.
I'll be right back.
Okay, next agenda item. The next meeting would fall November fifth, which you may have heard there's a bit of an election that day. So the request had been to move the meeting date back a week and meet on Tuesday, the twelfth, and I think that's a great idea. So unless anyone objects, the next council meeting will take place Tuesday, November twelfth, at the same time as usual, six thirty. Everybody good with that? Which puts us at adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn, I believe we...
Yes, one?
...have compared it off.
Oh, I'm sorry. Where is it? Oh, up here. I'm sorry. Yeah, we sure did. Okay, let me start with Mr. Fruit.
Well, I have respect to Ashley's comments. It is a busy weekend with center color fest, and it's a great opportunity to be involved in everything from the center, the Canyon Lights, Brown, to the Wills of Time, the quote show, of course, it's the haunted homecoming and the wine walk, so lots of opportunities to really enjoy the community. Thank you, Mayor.
Karen?
Yes, I just wanted to give a little explanation of why number eight was taken off our agenda. Yes, because at the last library board meeting, it was discussed that the library board will use the finance, the city's finance policy as well as state statutes so that it would be determined if the repair is under three thousand, that it will be repaired by the maintenance person. If it is over three thousand, then it would be considered under, I'm sorry, yeah, over three thousand, considered under our capital outline that the library has, but put forth through the city as far as the quotes and that type of thing, because that's part of our finance policy. So we just want to do things correctly, and that's been kind of an issue over the years. The city is certainly not forgiving about the library or the first thing it needs, it's just a main hand that we're getting around. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. McCarthy?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Chambers?
Just a few quick things. Park's Department met on the twenty-third. A couple of updates, they're looking at some local folks trying to help out with a couple of the dugouts at Crosscut Park, maybe getting some donated materials for some possible replacements there on fields five and/or six. Casey Garner, who is in the house tonight, presented some ideas on some ADA possibilities at our city parks. If you're interested in what that looks like, please see him. He had a slide presentation the whole nine yards, some great ideas for that, so if you're looking into those things. And if you were looking to cool off on Saturday, because I think the weather's supposed to be in the eighties, you cannot go to the pool or splash pad, they're both closed. Also, quickly, Nettorium met earlier last month. There was a feasibility study done for the gym at, right next to Simons, there was talk about how that could work out potentially with Simons and/or maybe with the school district. Nothing's been decided on that quite yet. One thing that was decided, though, at Nettorium was that there is a, going to be, a sign refurbishing that will be occurring for the Simons, the electronic board. It's kind of been outdated, if you will. I don't know when the last time it's been updated, so that's going to get kind of a facelift and a freshen up. And there's also going to be a deep clean at Simons from a local vendor that's going to come in and, like, I mean, deep scrub, so.
Thank you, Mary. Melanie?
Thank you. Just to add to Mark's comment about Simons, they just also recently, the foundation bought a piece of handicap-accessible exercise equipment out there. If you guys, anybody's out at Simons, take a look at it. It is, it is pretty impressive. It could be taken apart for wheelchair accessibility. It can be set at different levels for people that, you know, maybe have difficulty sitting, different things like that. So it's a very impressive piece of equipment if you get a chance to take a look at it and even try it out. From the personnel committee, we, Ashley had already touched on health insurance, open enrollment. We are also discussing the cost of living adjustment for employees. Right now, based on CPI, we're anticipating it to be between two and a half and three percent. We still have some open positions with the city. We have a limited time employment for admin support for public works and economic support. We have a treasurer's position, and we also have taken, gotten some applications for our administrative assistant position, and we'll be scheduling interviews for that soon. And that's it.
Thanks, Mr. Melby.
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Downs?
Nothing tonight. Officially, I would like to speak with Stacy Piller after the meeting.
Hey, that's easy. That's easy enough to do. Okay, thank you, Mr. Cairns.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, before we go, I'm going to encourage any member of the city council and any member of the public, perhaps, to attend the next meeting of the joint ambulance committee. We'll talk about it more after you do. I think the last two have been pretty contentious and uncomfortable, that no, there's no maybe they have been, and I would just like, I think it's prudent, maybe, for some more of the city representatives to attend. There's going to be some good question and answer at the next one. Mr. Melby, you were at the last meeting. You're aware there will be an agenda item on the next meeting to discuss sort of the relationship going forward between that committee and the county. I think it's going to be riveting, I really do. And if you would like to be part of that, I encourage you to attend the next one of those. Other than that, fire board continues to run very well. Thank you to everyone involved, Mr. Galvin, everyone over there. How many, Scott, how many firefighters do we have right now?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. And how many square miles does our fire district serve?
Three hundred and ten.
Which is either the largest or second largest in the state.
The largest with one station, yes.
The largest, one station serves in the state is our fire district, and you'll notice that we're not dealing with much regarding fire in here. Thanks for that. That's all I had to add. Is there a motion to adjourn? So who, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjourned tonight's meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both. Now adjourned, thank you, everyone.
No.